Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Mr. Markison?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to get right down to business. I'm going to skip the president's report this month and go right to the superintendent's report. Mike?
Okay, I'll begin with Dr. Holland.
And Drew's going to give his report first.
All right, hello. Ju Arson, student council vice president. Tricia can't be here tonight. She has a badminton match. So just updates from around the school since our last meeting. Big topic of last meeting was the walkout. When is planned? Nothing unexpected happened, which is good. That's how it was supposed to be. The PSAT and SAT are happening tomorrow. Seniors are looking forward to our day off. The support staff luncheon is being put on by the senior student council tomorrow afternoon, so that'll be fun. Spring sports, battling against the weather right now, have a lot of cancellations for a lot of things, but hopefully be getting warmer soon. Prom invitations were sent out by the junior student council, so everyone has received those. NHS applications are due soon for juniors, and classes are starting to review for APs coming up sooner than you'd think. The wall of fame ceremony's coming on April 20th. There's some very exciting alumni who will be honored, so we're looking forward to that. Student council's partnership for a school for disabled students in Vietnam is going to get kicked off next week, so I'll be on the lookout for more information on that. This morning, we talked to a mom from the APT to coordinate plans for the E-Day Walk. There are actually more food trucks coming than last year, so students should be excited about that. And a lot of seniors heard back from colleges over spring break, so I'd say a majority of seniors know where they're going after they graduate, or are down to one or two, two or three schools where they're deciding from.
Okay, so I won't repeat too much. We have assessment day tomorrow at the high school. Our freshmen will start their tests at 9:00 AM. We're asking everyone to be there at 8:45 in their seats. And our 10th and 11th graders will start at 8:00 AM, and we're asking for all of them to be there at 7:45 and seated. And so just a reminder, a couple years ago, we created a student growth model as outlined by Para. And our growth model really actually helps us assess and understand student learning across the entire school. And because we have all grade levels, including our incoming eighth grade, or incoming freshmen, current eighth graders assessed, we truly get a sense from eighth through 12th grade in understanding of student growth, as well as we're able to assess our overall academic program. And that information, similar to this year, will continue to be presented in our assessment report. And so I know that for, the SAT is required for our students in terms of graduation, but the SAT suite actually supports the school's growth model. We have the alumni wall of fame coming up, April 20th. We are all excited about that. We're encouraging all of our seniors to show up and be ready to cheer on our alumni and to enjoy the ceremony. The ceremony is in the RMA from 9:45 AM to 10:40 AM, and it's a ceremony that's primarily for our senior class. Thank you.
Okay, another part of the superintendent's report is public recognition. So Jimmy, and Cory, and Laura, and our students, come on up and tell us about a really remarkable event, and now in its fourth year?
Yeah, fourth year.
And take it away.
Yeah, we just finished TEDx LPHS, April, what was it?
March 15.
March 15. It was a long time.
Whatever.
Yeah, we've had our fourth year. We had 16 speakers.
Seventeen speakers.
Seventeen speakers.
Four musical performances, 140 participants, about 15 volunteers.
Can you use the mic?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's our fourth year doing the event, so we started this three years ago. It's basically a way for our students to share their big ideas, talk about, you know, what they're passionate about, and hopefully be the, be the spark that, you know, creates change. And we've had nearly 100,000, 100,000 views nearly. We're kind of approaching that total for our four years of TEDx LPHS talks. So the students and adults, Dr. Holland gave a talk this year, they give talks, we record them, and then they, they go up on the official TEDx YouTube channel, then Ted can also cherry pick talks to kind of showcase. Mary Beth Nayar, who's one of our teachers, awesome teacher, awesome person, she gave a talk two years ago, and Ted, Ted actually tweets about her talk like-
Every two months.
Like every two months. Like Mary Beth Nayar will be tweeted about by Ted, which is just really, really, really cool. So yeah, we have a couple of students here, though, that could hopefully, we have Ally Jackson, who is one of our speakers, one of our performers, and Ryan Elaveld, who is invaluable. He basically runs the entire event, and we cannot do it without him. So we'll have them kind of talk a little bit about, you know, what it is and exactly what kind of drew them to it.
Hi, I'm Ally Jackson, and I joined TEDx Club for the first time this year, but I was able to participate in the event last year. And I did a musical act. I was able to perform two songs. And this year, I really stepped out of my comfort zone and was able to give a talk on food waste in America. And it was just a really nice way for students to push themselves and present in front of their peers and spread ideas, you know, that are really important to them. So it's nice.
So before you run away from the microphone, while we've got you there, so tell us about what you learned from this experience and what you overheard other students having gotten from it.
Well, from this experience, I really learned important public speaking skills in terms of projecting and preparation. I was a little intimidated at, in the beginning, presenting, because I was afraid of, that I wouldn't memorize my speech very well and that I would forget it while I was presenting. And then I realized that practice makes perfect, and, you know, it's not as long as you think it is. And from my peers, I was really inspired by the passion that my peers had, and then the bravery. And in addition to the teachers who presented, I was kind of blown away with how willing they were to be vulnerable. And I think that's what really made their talks powerful. So that's what I took away from it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Elaveld. This is my second year helping out with TEDx. I mainly am a sound op, and I do a little bit of sound sign on the side. And probably my favorite part of TEDx is that it really lets us bring to bear the full resources our school has, because unlike the musical or a play where we only get to use a specific portion of our resources, we get to drag out everything. This year, we bought a nice video switcher, so we livestream everything. We get to use an amazing Allen &amp; Heath audio board that the school purchased a while back, that is an analog mixer, as you can see in the picture. And we occasionally also get to rent some wonderful bits of kit, like we rented two headset mics this year, which are much easier than using a standard lapel mic, which makes my job a lot easier, because it, instead of taking 30 seconds to switch, it takes two. Honestly, it's enjoyable, because we get to work with so many different people. We get to work with new media, of course. There's so many wonderful speakers who have covered an amazing variety of topics, everything from how the influenza virus spreads, to what it's like to build your own guitar in class, and how that can apply to learning in general, and a different style of learning.
So Ryan, you're also one of the people behind the curtain for the talent show as well, right? So there's, one of the things that strikes everybody every year about the talent show, in addition to the students onstage, is the production value. That is unbelievably good for, everybody is astonished by that at high school. So tell us a little bit, take us behind the curtain a little bit, about some of the stuff that you learned over the past year, because you've been really involved, and how that shows up in quality on the stage here.
Honestly, I think we're all very impressed by how well talent show comes out. It's very stressful initially, but by the end, everything just seems to come together. One of the big things with talent show is there's a lot more organization work involved, where we have to plot out, okay, this is who's moving which things. And this happens at this time, we might have to do a change when the lights are completely out, or it might be during a video, things like that. And that's especially helped with TEDx, because, again, we have to plan out how we're doing these changes. This year, we ended up using two different mics for both speakers, so that allowed us to alternate which mic was being worn by each speaker. So we'd have an even speaker and an odd speaker, and we'd change out mics. And this is really where TEDx wraps back around into the rest of the theater program in general, and performing arts. TEDx, because we have a little bit more time comparatively to prepare, and it's a little bit more experimental, we get to test out all sorts of different new things. Like, for example, this year, I tested out a new miking setup. In addition to the head mics, we had a bit of reinforcement, and we made more of a surround sound mix in comparison to previous years, where we've only had normal left-right sound mix.
How much risk is involved for you in trying stuff out, and it doesn't work, and boy, I'm glad I did it, and this, and this is what I learned?
It's always a learning experience, as I'm sure Dr. Holland and a couple of other people remember. We had these speakers, I don't think you could see them in the pictures, but speakers would walk right past them every time they entered and exited the stage. And one of the issues is that if I don't cut the mic fast enough, then it'll feedback in that awful, awful noise. It's, it's traumatizing, to say the least, for a sound op. And while we theoretically could have moved the speakers, or something like that, we decided it was worth the risk to have them there, in part because it kept them more out of sight, and it was a better view overall, but also because positioning-wise, it would provide a more full coverage of the audience.
Did anybody get traumatized?
Ah, much better this year.
Ryan, is audio your main interest, audio and sound?
Audio, stage design, bigitography, lights.
I do a little bit of everything before I entered high school. My main, I was with another theater group, and I helped out there. And the main thing I did was run sound. It was a very small program, to the point where we didn't even have a light board. But, so audio is my first love. I've tried to diversify. Lighting this winter went okay, but I think I'll stick with sound.
Incredibly valuable. Most people, younger people want to become Quentin Tarantino, so sound editing is incredibly valuable. There aren't enough good ones. Most of them are like, that's why I was curious, are like washed-out musicians?
Oh.
Guys that couldn't make it, no, they really couldn't make it as Mick Jagger. So it's interesting, it's good that you're doing it at a young age. I mean, you're, you're going to become incredibly valuable very quickly. So stick with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I should also say, kind of like bridging off of what Ryan said, our sound was the best it had ever been. And our video editing was the easiest and fastest it's ever been. I want to publicly recognize the APT and the foundation for generously granting us all this wonderful equipment. Just to kind of put it in the perspective, usually takes about three months to edit these videos together, because there's two different feeds, there's all these things going on. We got it done in one week this year, and we think that really shows. It's really important to get that out as quickly as possible, so all our student speakers get the recognition that they deserve, and kind of keep the momentum up. So between the new equipment and like Ryan, it's honestly the best it's ever been.
I also just want to add, it's an honor for our school to be a TED school. And our ed techs go to the training, and they keep a tight partnership with TED. And so I want to thank you for all of your work. Also, between the ed techs and the students, they're the most encouraging people on the planet. The students were very supportive and encouraging of me and others, and the ed techs literally provided moral support for all of us along the entire way. Just having them present made it a lot easier. Any feedback, any time of night, they've just been truly supportive and hands-on.
Yeah, and that starts with the leadership. All that positive energy, it is totally contagious, and it's like a love fest in there. So it's amazing that this happens at our school. I'm struck by it every year, and it's livestreamed, so grandparents or friends around the world are able to watch this. So this is the best part of our meeting, you guys. So thank you. Laura, Cory?
Thank you.
Jimmy, yep, thank you.
You guys are, are you on this one?
So this is the time of year when students hear back about their college admissions, and from time to time, one year or another, things sort of flare up in the community, but hey, there's a level of anxiety, about I didn't, my student didn't get into the school that he or she hoped to, and why is this happening, and how do we compare to other schools? And so I want to speak to that briefly, if I can figure out how to advance this. So a few years ago, I took a look at our, some of our peers. There's one peer that publishes all of the data on their students' applications, admissions, and then later attendance. And this is how Stevenson stacks up. They put all this stuff out on the web. So there are top five schools, all big schools, the most popular ones that their students attend. And you'll see a significant amount of overlap here when you look at our five. So Indiana, Illinois, ISU, and Wisconsin. And I would say, right now, if we were to update this data, Missouri would probably not be on there anymore. It would probably have been replaced by Iowa, I would guess, but we will have to update this and find out. So I heard about this conversation in the community just today, and so this is the latest information that I was able to grab today. So I also went back over seven years and looked at selective, highly, highly selective enrollment schools, because those are the ones that we tend to hear about, and it's how do we stack up? And the difference in the size of the schools obviously has, plays a role here. Also, the number of students who've applied and accepted, you can go pretty deeply into the analytics of this, but what I looked at is how many students were accepted. And you can see, for some of the Ivies, Harvard, Yale, and Princeton, were relatively close, when you do the math on those two, but not as many students were admitted on those three. But when you look at Cornell, relative, the size differential, we have vastly more students who are admitted to Cornell and Stevenson, for whatever reason.
I didn't interrupt, but going forward, if you're going to revisit the data, one of the things that confounds me is people don't count the athletic commitment with the automatic in with early action decision.
Yep.
But it comes out on the backend. So that would be helpful, I think, sometimes to the community to understand who's getting in without that in.
Yeah, I don't have-
As a, as a unique in, I mean, that's not, that's a done deal, if you get recruited, top career, and you sign the letter.
Yep.
So I think that would be helpful, I think, to understand how-
Yeah, the, Stevenson does not report that in any way, and, and we don't either. One of the things that is very much the case in schools like Lake Forest is that we're going to have, at a given highly selective school, they're going to admit one, perhaps two, students from our school. And if that happens to be a student with an athletic scholarship, that's your student for the year.
Well, we haven't assigned a degree or some piece, so there's probably an extrapolate back and understand who's getting in without the in.
Right.
And who's getting in just from the effort.
Interesting point. One of the key differences between students from Lake Forest and Stevenson is Williams and Amherst, those are known as the little Ivies, and those are the most selective of the non-Ivies. They're also small, they're under 2,000 students. And they have very few students that apply there. It's one of the things, when you go to a high school with over 4,000 students, you can actually take a step back in terms of the type of facilities that you have. If you go to one of these little schools, and if you have visited them, you'll see that Stevenson's physical plant is really astonishing compared to even many of the private colleges. I've been on the campus of both of these, and I think Stevenson holds, holds up very, very well compared to either of them. So we show up very differently, because relatively speaking, Williams and Amherst are around the same size or larger compared to our school. So there's some things that have changed, and this is part of the conversation in the community. A number of factors that have changed since 2014, when I gathered this data, and now, and it just continues to go. One is the common app. So students are applying more than ever, to more places than ever, and it's easier than it's ever been. If you think of how many colleges that you applied to, the answer for this age group is probably one or two. And for your kids, it's probably many students are over 10 right now. The most we had a few years ago, I think, was 39. Another factor is the, whether it's, they're not students, or geographical minorities or non-minorities. So if you are all from the North Shore, and you're applying to all the same highly selective schools, that works as a very distinct disadvantage for our students. Also, when you factor in how many of the students that are admitted are athletes, so the overall intake of students, children of major donors, international kids, legacies, promising students, whether they're low-income or minority, and they're also looking for kids from a wide range of backgrounds, that takes up about two-thirds of the most selective schools' available slots. Vanderbilt's acceptance rate this year, for example, is down to 7.3%. And that is down, last time I saw it was, they were in double digits, and they've dropped obviously well below that. They're middle 50%, so the middle 50% of their group is a 33, and the tops of the 75th percentile would be a student with a 35. That is unbelievably rarefied air, and that's the kid at the 75th percentile. So the result of all this is kids are applying more and more, to more places, and they're competing for what's already a small slice of the pie. We had an author in speaking this year, she's a dean of Stanford, and she worked with freshmen there. And a couple of things that she pointed out, one is that schools have a vested interest in getting as many students to apply as possible, because it makes them look very good, whether they have a likelihood of being admitted or not. And then also, the, the reality, she was at Stanford, the reality is, despite what they say about accepting well-rounded students, and all the happy talk around that, the reality is, they're going to admit the student that takes the eight AP classes in their senior year, or some ridiculous thing like that. And this is something that's been going on for some time. She adds, as, as a note, and we've got a number of our students here with us, I've heard from our students, and she said it over and over, man, don't ask your kids where, let them tell you. Don't ask them where they're going, because it's really awkward, really, really awkward for them. The benefit, there are huge benefits and challenges to going to a great high school. And Lake Forest is absolutely a great high school on the North Shore of Chicago. The beginning of that is what's known as relative deprivation. Malcolm Gladwell, this is incredibly robust, no matter where you happen to be, you create your perception of the world based on who's around you. One of the things with this, I talked to parent groups about this, how many people in the nation have college degrees? What percentage of the American populace has a college degree? And in a town like this, the estimates are typically 70 or 80%, something like that. It's below 30% nationally. But in this town, everybody's got a degree, or virtually everybody. And so here, it is very easy to feel inferior, and that shows up in a bunch of different ways. Our kids, generally speaking, don't think they stack up all that well until they leave. And after they leave, they realize that they write better, they're stronger in math, they have incredible presentation skills, and on and on. So our average ACT is north of 27 right now. The national average is hugely below that, so our students stack up amazingly well across the board. One of the things that Gladwell also points out is that it really, really matters where you go, and if you are a big fish in a small pond, all of the advantages of, of that institution accrue to you. And it's really, really tough to be on the bottom of the hierarchy. So if you got into that stretch school, and you're just barely hanging on, it gets really, really tough. And he looked at students in STEM, math, and science, and he said, it doesn't matter, any college that you go to, the kids who are on the top, they get degrees, and the students that are on the bottom, they don't. And the kids that are in the middle, it's about a 50-50 proposition. Said it doesn't matter whether you look at Eastern Kentucky or Harvard, they do the same thing. So what advantages do our kids have from being in such a great school? They're super well-prepared in all of their core areas. They also have a huge number of opportunities to be involved curriculally, co-curricularly, just like with the TEDx. For some of the students, that means going to a big school is a great thing, and they find a sense of place in their fraternity or their sorority. But there are other ways that our students can really benefit, that in my opinion, not enough of them take seriously. And that is looking for the opportunity for personalization, where they can differentiate the students, or an opportunity to be a big fish in a small pond. These places have amazing alumni networks. And also, very importantly, when college now, if you go to a highly selective school, you'll get zero money from them, and it will be $65,000 to $70,000, not including travel. Scholarships for our kids, they are dying to give our kids scholarship money at tons of places. And at least two of the students that are with us here today are students that are recipients of that kind of scholarship money at the very kinds of places that I'm talking about. So the upshot of this is our kids have an incredibly disproportionate advantage at a smaller school, or in an honors college, at a larger state college, or in places where kids don't apply that much. If they're all going to this, all applying to the same places, they're not going to admit, no matter how fantastic our students are, they're going to have a limited number of students that are going there. So look at where our kids are going. Small schools, honors colleges, and schools in the northeast are, and northwest are largely overlooked. A lot of the thing, I don't, a lot of parents think that they can't afford to send their kid to a private school. There's almost no such thing as full price anymore, unless you're going to one of the most selective schools in the nation. They will offer anywhere from 20 to 40% scholarship, making it less expensive than it is to go to U of I. Also, the lack of name brand recognition, and this is where, asking kids where they go, parents create an amazing amount of pressure on their kids by talking about where their kids are applying. My advice to kids is, and parents, don't tell anybody anything. Not your GPA, not your ACT score, not where you're applying, or where you've been admitted to. You tell them one thing, and one thing only. This is where I'm going, and it's a great place for me. That's it. That takes all the pressure off. So finding just the right place for, for your kid, that is a huge opportunity in all of the selective school press, is if the search is to find just the right place for your kid, irrespective of where it is, it can even be in a foreign country. We have kids each year that go to England, sometimes they go to Canada. Find just the right place for you, and double down on that, and you will be a happier person. There are huge consequences for being at the bottom of a hierarchy, and correspondingly huge advantages for being at the top of the hierarchy. So if you are in the honors college at Seton Hall University, or if you're in a specialized program at a place like that, all of the institutional wherewithal is directed at those top students. That's what every college does. If you take a six- or seven-year view of this, and you save your money for graduate school, let somebody else pay for your undergrad, increasingly, the graduate degree is what really, really winds up being the differentiator. And class rank makes a difference on where you get in, and what kind of aid you get. So the three things that make a difference in graduate school are class rank, GPA, and your test scores. And you're more likely to be more highly placed if you are at a place where you have really, really thrived. really, really thrived. So that is the message that I'd like to send our kids and our parents about what college admissions looks like right now. Thank you.
Related to one of those bullets on one of your slides, what do we do, maybe this is a question for you, Shayla, to make sure kids know they don't, they shouldn't take the eight AP classes, and this is a bubble. I mean, this is a unfair look at what they're going to see in college.
That they shouldn't take eight AP classes?
And, yeah, just when you're comparing yourselves to Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Nollwood, that's not a realistic look at the world.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I mean, when you go to the Illinois Conference for School Board Members, it's amazing to be in a room with school board members who work in schools or are on, excuse me, that are on boards of schools that do not have an AP class. And if they do, they may have an online AP class. In communities like this, there is an extraordinary amount of pressure that is not necessarily generated by the parents. Frequently, it's the lunch table where the toughest questions are asked. What do you do? Ah, I think some of the stuff that it has to do with speaking openly and plainly about it, that's one of the reasons that Jew Lythcott-Hames came in. With our counselors, I think they're always in a really tough position because they have ambitious kids and ambitious parents that have expectations, and there's this arms race that's going on. I think they're in probably the toughest position, but they're always trying to moderate, in my experience, trying to moderate what looks like a well-balanced lifestyle. But Shayla, you might have some other things to add to that.
Thanks. So I, we encourage, we're encouraging students to think about fit. Oftentimes, I talk with classes of students, actually, and we talk about their interests and things like that. And there is a pressure to consider the top fifty colleges, whether they really want to go there or not. And when we talk about some of their experiences, sometimes there's not, there's less of a conversation around fit and more around the prestige connected to the college. And I understand the benefits of that as well. But absent fit, many students will choose a school and not be happy or fulfilled, and start looking elsewhere. And so when we have the conversations here, and we have the reports around how our kids are finishing, how many students end up leaving a school and going to another, that connects with that. I also think that we need to continue to educate the entire school community on the landscape. Similar to what was just shared, colleges are enrolling less. I've been looking over the messages our college counselors have received from all these universities. A common theme is that they're not accepting as many students, and they are looking for students with well-rounded experiences, or something that sets them apart as well. And so while we try to encourage students to think about their entire time in high school, and ways to stretch themselves, part of this is also talking to students about being who you are and being comfortable with that, and speaking to that in the application process. And I think that's important. I also, I know there's a lot of pressure, and that's real, and everyone feels it. But I think the more we can educate the school community, as well as keep our pulse on things, and make sure that our academic offerings and program is in alignment, or considers that trajectory, while I would love to create our own school that's absent any outside pressure, the reality of it is, we are responsible for preparing our kids for whatever they want to do. And so we have an obligation to, to make sure that there's a level of alignment, while also encouraging our students to be authentic, and to consider what they want to do, and find a school or an experience that is a good fit for them after they leave us.
So Reese, I'll say, having survived two and a third on the horizon, I think one of the pieces that parents need to recognize, like any other piece of the world, you look at all the major league teams in expansion, the concept that the prestige schools are only ten has to be a concept that has to be eliminated. And the prestige school should probably be the top twenty-five, and we shouldn't talk about the top fifty, but really the top hundred, and that it's not a failure if you're not in the top ten, because that's, the amount in the pool of applicants has increased exponentially, and the admitted students hasn't. And so it's naturally, it's a flawed idea that there's only one Harvard, and that's that if you're not there, you're a failure. And I think a lot of parents get hung up on, "Well, those are the ten schools when I was younger, and now the top ten should be a top twenty-five and a top hundred."
Yeah, I, as a parent of three graduates, I can attest to the fact that Lake Forest prepares them very well. There's no question that they have excellent academic grounding. But I did want to pick up on the one Gladwell quote about the huge consequences of being at the bottom of the hierarchy. And I appreciate how important that is in terms of finding the right fit for college, but we need to apply that to Lake Forest High School, and think about students who may feel at the bottom of the hierarchy at Lake Forest High School. And we do not want those terrible consequences to leave our building on graduation.
Yeah, I couldn't possibly agree more. I think it's one of the things that I hear repeatedly from students is that, and it's a hard thing, is like, one of my friends, their son was talking about, you know, "I only have a," and it was a nationally-leading ACT score, "I only have." And that's a very common way for kids to feel until they leave, or it's a really, really hard community to be a nationally-average or a nationally-below-average kid. And these, every student deserves to be challenged, and stimulated, and offered as many opportunities as possible. And it's very easy to overlook all the students in favor of some, and completely agree. Yeah, there's one final thing. This is not a conversation that is unique among parents to Lake Forest. I also texted a couple of my regional colleagues here, and one of the comments was, "Yeah, our school had a really tough year at Michigan this year. Had a really hard time getting kids admitted." And very happy to have one of our students here with us that was, got a favorable acceptance there, and is talking about it publicly, so I'm not outing anybody. So happy to hear that.
Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Mark Stern. I'm a taxpayer of this district. I'm here tonight to demand that this board discharge its duty to hold Superintendent Simic accountable for his failure to operate the district in accordance with board policies. Last month, the superintendent permitted students to skip class to engage in partisan demonstrations. It has also been reported that in direct violation of the closed campus policy, at least nine students left campus for an extended time during the school day. True civil disobedience, not the fake North Shore variety, has consequences. The Student Handbook states that all absences are documented and communicated. First, not permissible absences result in progress cards sent to parent and student. Has this been done? There is no policy-based governance if the administration can ignore policies with impunity. The purpose of this disruption is irrelevant. Who's in charge? The board or teenagers? If on April twentieth, also known as 420, one hundred kids announce a walkout to demand action to legalize weed, which sixty-eight percent of Cook County just voted in favor of doing, who are you to stop them? Once you open the door, you cannot engage in viewpoint-based discrimination. Let's just schedule a free period every week for the cause celebre of the moment. Taking an hour of recess in the middle of the school day is not exactly a profile in courage either. When kids turn up for an event at seven AM during spring break, then we'll know they're committed. The silent majority of students suffered from this. Their right to attend class was denied by the actions of the minority abetted by pusillanimous administrators. If anything was learned, it is that a loud group can ignore the rules and disrupt the education of their peers, the exact opposite of what we should teach our children about becoming responsible and respectful citizens in a free society. And Superintendent, perhaps that's why Mizzou is no longer on the top list for exactly that reason. Thank you.
So I'll skip right to the committee reports, Education Committee, please. Anything since last?
We have not met. Our next meeting is April seventeenth.
Finance and Ops, David?
We have a meeting this coming sixteenth, so have yet to meet, and will shortly.
Thank you. Policy, Diana and Ted?
We met this morning, and not a whole lot to report. It was all pretty straightforward.
Nothing on, I don't see any new stuff. So next month, next month we'll have some new policies. Okay, cool. All right. Sally, liaison report, Ed Redd?
I have several things.
Okay.
So the, on March fourteenth, Dr. Mr. Simic and I, I just promoted you, attended the Illinois Association of School Boards Lake Division's Spring Meeting, and there were two things that were talked about there that I'd like to share with the board. The first is that Roger Eddy, who is the current executive director of IASB, although he is, has announced his retirement, reported that Governor Roner had met with legislators in Illinois on March thirteenth to discuss a package of school safety legislative initiatives that we are likely to see wending their way with proposed legislation in the upcoming session. IASB advised its membership to think about the importance of maintaining local controls in terms of any proposals that are made in relation to that. I don't have any more information than that, but... No, it wasn't at all clear, and they haven't been introduced yet. They go back into session next week, though, now that the primaries are over, and I think that we will start to see some of that proposed legislation. But I thought it was interesting to talk about the impact on local school districts having control over how they would enact them, and that was the one thing they told us to watch out for. The second thing was that the featured speaker was Dr. David Schuler, who is the superintendent of School District two-fourteen in Illinois. It's the second-largest school district. It encompasses Buffalo Grove, Wheeling. He was just named the high school district, I'm sorry, the two thousand eighteen Illinois Superintendent of the Year by the Illinois Association of School Administrators, and he's one of the founders, along with folks from the School Superintendents Association, of an organization called Redefining Ready. Their website is redefiningready dot, I'm going to say org, redefiningready.org. Their mission is to talk about research-based metrics to define and assess students for college readiness, career readiness, and life readiness. And I liked that, I liked that third edition of life readiness there. They started out taking issue with the college and career readiness scores that were reported by the standardized test makers, and they talked about the phenomenon when Park was first introduced, of all of a sudden, finding very dismal numbers of students who were deemed college and career ready, and finding that just as we track our students' performance at four and five years out, the number of students who were going on to achieve college degrees didn't match with the dismal numbers that they had been predicted. So I am going to share with all of you a single page from their college and career readiness indicators material, all of which is publicly available on their website. As we are entering into the exercise to create our own dashboard, and Mr. Simic had reported on that a couple of board meetings ago, I thought there were some interesting metrics that we ought to be looking about, looking at in terms of data that was of interest to us. I want to be super careful that I am not an expert in this area. There are too many people in the room that are, including Dr. Holland and Mr. Simic, so I am not the right person to speak to this in detail, but I hope that we will talk about this more, perhaps in the Ed Committee. There were some very interesting things. It's a terrific presentation, and one of the things that IASB is doing is talking about putting past presentations online in a webinar format. I would love for us to be able to watch it as a board. It's maybe fifteen or twenty minutes long. But there were lots of cool, big data metrics that I think are worth consideration, one of which, that play out, right, as they see the students passing through, and then their, their performance in college. They talked, he talked before, of course, about the importance of attending AP classes. We've heard that many times from our administration. And the fact that just being in an AP class can have phenomenal benefits, whether or not you even take the AP test or how you score on it. There was a lot of emphasis on the benefit of dual enrollment, which is something I know that we are looking actively at. He had one interesting fact. Students are statistically significantly more likely to persist to a second semester of college and earn a higher college GPA if they have, if they've had the opportunity to take even one dual enrollment class while they're in high school. He talked about the metrics around attendance, which is something that Dr. Holland has been doing a lot to bring us within not only the Illinois standards, but also to link it through our record-keeping to ensure that our students are attending, because we know that that breeds success as well. He talked also about the benefits of using community services requirements to fulfill class requirements. They tended to enhance the odds of college graduation by up to twenty-two percent. I thought those were really interesting metrics. Again, I'm not the expert, but I thought those were interesting things that were worth pursuing. The last thing he said, I can see Dr. Holland, okay. The last thing he said is that they are considering asking any vendor who awards any contract to do work in the district to offer internships to their students, which I also thought was an interesting, was an interesting notion that we might want to pursue. I'm ready to talk about the federal legislative stuff, so I'll stop here because you have stuff you want to say.
So we're ahead of this. Our entire PLP, and I'll be presenting on that at the end of the year, is totally aligned with this work. I keep my, I'm on the pulse of all this, and you'll see volunteer service, you'll see attendance, you'll see an alignment between the courses that our kids have taken, as well as their involvement in extracurriculars, which is in there, dual credit opportunities. Our whole dashboard is already based on all of these. So we have been at the forefront of creating a systemic way of collecting this information, and our dashboard is based off of all, literally, everything that you mentioned. So I just wanted to share that, because we've talked about in the last two years in our strategic plan, life readiness, which connects to our SEL work and our executive functioning work as well.
I'm not at all surprised that you're on top of it. That's great. I felt like many of the things he had talked about were things that we have heard about in the Ed Committee. I just, I found it very inspiring, so I'm thrilled to hear that we're going to hear more about it. Briefly, federal legislative, on March twenty-third, President Trump signed the final fiscal year eighteen budget into law. It provided a $2.6 billion increase to the US Department of Education. There had been expectations that education funding would be cut in this fiscal year, so any level of funding that even remained flat would be considered a win. Our district budget, I believe, takes in about $643,000 this year in restricted, restricted grants from the federal government, and at least we can expect to continue to be paid. Is that fair to say? Fair enough. Last point. The state of Illinois has finally started the payment process for the additional $300 million-plus to schools that were deemed to have inadequate funding. We were, the, all of the schools in the state of Illinois have now been given their adequacy targets, and what percentage of that they are currently funded at, and we are assigned two tiers for eligibility for the new funding. As completely anticipated, we are in tier four, which puts us at the bottom of the list in terms of getting the new state funding, although we are going to get something like $2,000, which is exciting.
More than what we...
$2,000 more. I'm sorry, not just only $2,000. If you are interested, and you probably aren't, I did print everybody, so if you're at all, no, Tom's not interested, I'll pass it down. You can see where everybody else fell. The end.
I'm assuming that North Shore is a lot of tier four.
There was a lot of tier fours, yeah.
Most, yeah, I think all the north suburban North Shore districts are tier four.
But I will say, for what it's worth, what makes it kind of interesting reading is how underfunded some, some districts are. It's painful, some of the reading.
Okay. Diana, anything to report on APT Foundation? Diana, anything to report on APT Foundation?
Just really quickly, the foundation, we had, they had a meeting on March 21st, and their big news is they're celebrating Educational Excellence Luncheon is coming up on Wednesday, April 18th, at Exmoor Country Club. Kind of some new things for them this year. I think they've followed your lead, Mike. They are having teacher and student speakers from the Art Department and the Business Incubator Program come. It's kind of the highlighted feature of the luncheon. They have cocktail reception music being performed by Swing Sonata Jazz Ensemble, which is from our high school, talented high school musicians. And they have a balloon pop fundraiser, which unlike a raffle, everybody wins. So lots of good prizes.
Is the prize in the balloon?
Apparently, it's like a number and then you go claim whatever it is, but you're guaranteed something. Last thing, they have 60-plus silent auction items, including prom packages, parking, and student artwork. Kind of excited about that one. The APT meeting was April 4th, not to duplicate what Drew and Dr. Holland covered. Prom is coming up, and if any parent out there wants to donate to Prop, Project Safe Prom, which is how the buses get paid for, they would love to take your money. There's lots and lots of buses that pull out of that parking lot to take the kids to the prom and bring them back safely. So donations are appreciated. And then the last thing, Dr. Sasson just kind of gave the Board an update about all the wonderful things he's been doing. They reviewed food allergies and anaphylactic procedures and created a handbook. Fill it very good about that. And he was just talking about next year's registration and how the classes are filling and the comprehensive approach that the councils were taking instead of just check, check, check. So it was all really good news. And there was no boosters meeting in March, so we'll have more to report from the April meeting.
Thank you. Ted, anything on NSSED?
NSSED, we have not met since our last meeting. However, I did just get an email saying, for those who haven't come with me to a meeting, there are three main buildings on the Highland Park campus. And the second-largest building is what's considered the Rubloff Building. It used to be United Civil Pauls's Building. We've been in negotiations for years about possibly taking it over. In the meantime, we've been renting or leasing the building and just received word that apparently we've reached terms where we will be buying the building. It's good for us because we're buying it for a lot less than we leased it for over the long term. I'll have more to report Wednesday. And if you want to get the information and I get it, you can come with me. Of course, nobody's taken me up on that. Secondly, on May 19th, we have our Foundation 5K. And I'd like to thank Dr. Nemecus and Dr. Blom from Illinois Bonin Joint. They're our title sponsor for the event with a very generous donation. So if you want to get out and get some fresh air and go running Saturday morning, May 19th, come on out and join us.
Get a warm-up.
Yeah.
Highland Park at the campus.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next up are the action item part of my, of the agenda. I'd like to remind everybody, please stop me. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second and then leave some time for questions in the middle. Please, anybody, if I don't do that, stop me and correct me. So we have time for questions or discussion in the middle. Okay. So first up is approval of an elevator renovation bid in the amount of $88,731. May I have a motion to approve the elevator renovation bid?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the elevator renovation bid in the amount of $88,731.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, discussion? Anything?
There was just one bid?
Yes, indeed, there was just one bid. It was publicly put on notice that we were accepting bids. I did question and ask why. My understanding is this is a very small job in the elevator world, as it is an elevator that is, it's not a bank of elevators and it's only a few floors. So generally speaking, it isn't the most desired. The current, the submitted bidder is actually the company that we use for our service on the elevator, so they're most familiar with the project most likely as well. It's a complicated modernization. The spec itself was, for the project, was over 300 pages.
Can you give us a little bit of an idea about what do you mean by modernization? Is it a safety issue? Is it...
So the elevator itself is, is a little over 30 years old. So we continually, obviously we have inspected. There's a state inspector for elevators as well as the inspections that we do. We try to be more preventative than reactive. So when you kind of look at all of your equipment, what useful life may or may not be, what have you been replacing, what parts are becoming difficult to get? This was placed on our horizon a few years back, knowing that eventually we were going to need to update those panels. So it's the electrical panels and the accompanying engineering that goes with that. Then also, if you read the memo, we're going to need to do a few other things that was pointed out by the state inspector as well, since we are making changes to the area. We also had to bring other, other pieces of that area up to code. So for example, we needed to move the sub-pump out of that engineering room into a different room. We needed to add an exhaust fan because there's going to be a heat issue with those panels. So there are a few other things that we also had to add. But generally speaking, being more preventative than reactive when you know that you have equipment that's, well, in this, in this case, probably passed its useful life, but we were able to get it this far.
One last question. How many people use the elevator? Like, do you have round numbers?
I do not, but be more of a, I'm not taking a tally or a survey. It is the main elevator when you walk into the high school to the left, just off the main entrance.
Oh, I thought it was... I had sent something, thinking it was the one in the commons, and the one that we walk straight in the front door and it's on the left. The stuff that I see going up and down that, a lot of that is the tech stuff, because tech is down there. There's a lot of, it's like a freight elevator almost.
There's really, there's two elevators in the high school. There's the one located just off the main entrance, and then there's one down, and that may be what you're calling the commons, but it's the lunchroom. Those are the two elevators for the building.
Total cost, though, with all that other stuff, the sub-pump and the heat load, it's $110,000? Is that what...
$110,000 was the original budget. The actual project cost right now is estimated $129,000. We're going to try to do some of that in-house, some of the wiring, fire door, those type of things listed at the bottom, maybe farm out some of the small jobs. I did leave in a construction contingency, so that will be probably the difference if we're unable to do it in-house and we need to go get expertise that we don't have. If we're able to do it in-house, I don't anticipate using the contingency, so that money would just be returned.
And also, I see Perkins and Will, and once again, it is the architecture of note. How much are they getting?
I don't have the break, it was a $19,000 fee, but most of that is to engineering for that, that spec. But I do have the breakdown if you want to, I could shoot it to you at a later point, but I asked the breakdown between architect and engineering, but the majority is for engineering.
So why has this been, I mean, I know it's been on our list for a couple, three years. Why has it always been pushed and why?
Well, it was pushed once. It came on the list in 2015, 16, and I think at the time that it was more of an immediate concern. We were able to make some tweaks to it. So as with any other piece, if we feel we can get a few more years out of it, we'll, we'll push it down. I would be hesitant to continue to do that. It's only a matter of time, I think, before we become reactive and not preventative. So we did move it from 16 to 18. It's been sitting at 18 for the last, fiscal year 18 for the last two years. Technically, now this will be a fiscal year 19 project because it won't conclude until probably August.
And Jen, what's the life, what's the lifespan of this? I may have missed that.
Of the new, of the modernized one, because all the, all the, I mean, we're not replacing the elevator. The piece is...
But the presumption is we're going to do this and then we're not going to have to look at the elevator for 20 years?
Well, at least long after I'm gone. I'm hoping at least 20.
I'm struggling with getting my arms around whether or not this is a reasonable price. I know one of the reasons we use architects and put it out for bid is so we get comps. I mean, I have very limited experience in elevators, but this is well in excess of what we pay at my shop for a three-floor elevator, for an upgrade or a modernization. So I'm, I have no basis to know whether the $88,000 is a reasonable number. But just one person. Any other comments, questions?
So, so as a public school, I mean, you said the proposal was 300-plus pages. Are we beholden to different regulations than a private building?
I think to some extent we probably are, but the specifications were really about the engineering pieces themselves. When I say the large is part of the architect engineering fee was for engineering, it was that modernization, but replacing the panels and being very specific, and I'm not an engineer in any way, shape, or form. But that is what, why the specs themselves were complicated. It was changing out kind of the guts of those electrical panels and what we needed to do.
And, and playing devil's advocate from Perkins and Will, to put a whole new elevator in and not renovate something is significantly more?
Well, I mean, we have the shaft. I just was curious, the electronics, right? It sounds like we're getting a new elevator electronically.
Better, better to repair than to replace.
And maybe I had asked you before the meeting about whether, since we were only able to get one bid this year, if, maybe if we waited a year, if we could get more bids, and you felt that that was unlikely, maybe you could share that.
Yeah, really by, based on the information that I received regarding the scope of the position, the scope of the project. Our project's not going to get any bigger. It's going to be the exact same project a year from now, which we would pay for escalation. Obviously, the cost of things go up over time. We, when we publicly bid this, it goes out not only just in a regular public bid, but it also goes out on websites for public works projects. So if I was a carpet vendor, or if I am an elevator company, I'm looking at those public sites. They're not trolling necessarily our specific site, but they're looking to see what's out there for the scope of work with one elevator with not an overly complicated, I mean, I think it's complicated, but compared to a bank of 20 elevators that a municipality or a large scare place might be doing, this is a small project in that world. We're not likely to get, you know, a big number of bidders.
Okay. Have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Nemecus?
And I just want to clarify, Perkins and Will's feel that this is a reasonable, prudent cost to the elevator? Because I, I agree with Reese. I mean, my vote will be aye, but I'm, my hesitation is I have no basis to not, and if it's a needed thing, then so be it.
It was actually estimated when we put it on the capital project list in 2015, 16 at $110,000. So it actually, I mean, that's where was, you know, roughly pegged at the time. This came in fairly close to that. When you look at the original, when you look at the original pieces of this project, that actually came in at $107,731. So really close to where we had kind of pegged it. That was in, you know, that was a number that we worked on with engineers at the time.
Great. So I, I'll vote aye.
Thank you. Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye. Don't want the elevator to fall down.
Mr. Marcusson?
No.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is approval of a textbook purchase in the amount of $120,800 per policy 2:20. May I have a motion to approve the textbook purchase?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the textbook purchase in the amount of $120,800 per policy 2:20.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
I was happy to see that there are online subscriptions as part of it, which just feels critical. Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is an adoption of an IMRF resolution. Can someone explain why we're doing this, why we have a need?
In March, District 115 was selected for a routine IMRF audit. IMRF is the pension system for all non-certified employees. So if you work over 600 hours in a calendar year and you're not a teacher, you're going to be an IMRF. So it's a routine audit. They have a list of requests for us, then they go through and audit our records. In auditing our records, they determined that there's a $2,500 FBA that is related to insurance that we pay to a group of an...
What's an FBA? Explain, say what happened.
Fringe benefit allowance. So it's a cash payment that is paid that can be applied towards their insurance contributions. Should they not take insurance, they still get the $2,500 fringe benefit allowance. So there's a group of employees, non-certified employees, that were hired prior to 3/112 that receive this fringe benefit allowance. Since we pay this and it's related to health insurance, we are asked to pass this new resolution. So IMRF has a board of trustees, similar to this Board of Education that oversees. In December of 2017, they said, you know, we want a resolution adopted by each district that does such a thing like this, and municipalities, transparency. Do people know this is happening, et cetera? So the audit finding was you need to pass this resolution if you continue to pay the $2,500 FBA. So that's what's on here.
Very hopeful. So may I have a motion to adopt the IMRF resolution?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the IMRF resolution.
Second?
Second.
Any questions for Brittany or anybody? None? Okay. Have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 Board of Education meeting dates?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the 2018, 2019 Board of Education meeting dates.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? There were some questions about Mondays versus Tuesdays. We generally are trying to meet on Mondays.
I, I thought Diana had a question, and, and I was just, I received the answer, and my question I had is I thought we moved to a, a secular approach to dates, and, and one of the dates we're accommodating is to accommodate a holiday, correct?
All three.
All three. So I, I'm just, from a matter of consistency with what we did with the calendar for the school in the, in the coming year, I, I just wanted to, I feel like we should probably be consistent with, with that rather than inconsistent.
Good point. How does everyone else? I agree.
I would, I would chime in and, and ask the Board on, to think about this, while we have, while we have, we're accommodating dates while we are in school, board meeting dates, we're moving, there are dates on which we are not going to have a board meeting that would be related to some, some religious holidays in, in one faith or another. For example, we're not going to have any meeting of any kind ever on Christmas. And so while we are in school on those days, I think that the board meeting, if those are, if those are dates that we can accommodate, I would suggest that either we table this or try to avoid those dates for significant religious holidays that we're aware of going forward.
We were trying to get the dates on Tuesdays, just, or on Mondays, just so we could get as many of the seven of us as possible. So we've got three, three Mondays.
Yeah, the, the October date is, one of the dates is Rosh Hashanah, I believe. Another one is Columbus Day, and the other is Hanukkah on December 10th, Monday, December 10th.
Are we in school on Columbus Day? No. So what does everybody think? We can talk openly before we, want to table this? You want to vote on it? You want to...
I think we should table it because I think Tom brings up a very good point of our religion-neutral policy, but I think we need to be considerate of other people's holidays. So maybe we should table it and have a discussion as a board and get back to it.
The other thing I'd just like to check, do we have, I, I forget the rules and the timeframe, we're okay tabling time-wise to posting meetings, et cetera? There's no run into those requirements? Okay. I just know that we published and inadvertently backed ourselves into a corner.
Okay. Tabled. Next up is approval of an, excuse me, honorable dismissal of a part-time, non-tenure teacher. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest... I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the honorable dismissal of part-time, non-tenured teacher.
Second.
Someone want to explain this from the staff, what we're doing here?
So based upon staffing, that is based upon student enrollment and course selection, it has been determined that the FTE is not needed for course selection, therefore this is an honorable dismissal, which is resulting in a reduction in force, which is a RIF.
Based on staffing and course selection?
Correct.
So may I have a motion to approve the honorable dismissal of the part-time, non-tenured teacher?
You have a motion, a second reason.
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Rebecca, would you mind getting up? Next up is approval of the honorable dismissal, honorable dismissal and reassignment of a teacher. So I'll do the same thing, and I won't forget this time. May I have a motion to approve the honorable dismissal and reassignment of a teacher?
It's the exact same rationale, just a different faculty member, and it is due to course enrollment and student selection. Therefore, the FTE is not required to fulfill the need for students at this time, so we're recommending a reduction in force based upon a sequence of dismissal, which is honorable.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the honorable dismissal and reassignment of teacher.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion?
So I find this one extremely challenging, but, but I find my role on the board is, is that we have to respect the process of the administration, and, and the process has been validated, and, you know, our role is more oversight rather than getting into the granular details about this. So I have very, very mixed feelings toward this, and my vote will represent what I think is my duty to the community in this instance.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Tom. We spent a lot of time talking about this in closed session since it does relate to an employee and staffing, so this isn't taken lightly. So may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
No.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is approval of our new math instructional director to a one-year contract. May I have a motion to approve the math instructional director, one-year contract?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the math instructional director, one-year contract.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Looks like a good hire, Shayla. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is approval of the HR report, HR report as presented. A lot of stuff on there just because of the time of the year. So may I have a motion to approve the human resources report?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, on anything? Nope? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, our consent agenda items. I'll remind our board, any item can be removed at the request of any board member, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for February 2018, approval of release of executive session minutes for September 11th, 2017 to February 12th, 2018, minutes of a regular meeting and a workshop for March 12th, 2018, minutes of an executive session from the same date, minutes of a board workshop, executive session for March 13th, and disposal of audio recordings from April 11th, 2016.
I move, oh, I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have two FOIA requests this past month, and they're both complete, one from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association and one from Deltech. Some announcements, as Drew mentioned, he gets to sleep till noon tomorrow. Tomorrow is our PSAT freshman and sophomore testing, and our SAT testing for juniors, no school for seniors.